I don't know if everybody can see the flag in the background.
We can, we can.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Councilor Rotundo? He's absent, he was here. Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, a forum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of February 8th, 2021.
No move.
In favor of all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number three, certificate of merit will be awarded to former Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, for his many years of dedicated public service to the residents of Revere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Counselor.
It's a great honor and a privilege to offer this motion on behalf of the Revere City Council to our good, good friend and neighbor, Bob DeLeo. As all of us can experience in the past, the many laughs we shared with Mr. DeLeo and his group. But what a wonderful guy he has been to the city of Revere. He has never forgotten where he's come from. He chose Revere because, first of all, he chose his business to be placed in Revere. So that showed automatically that what he thought about our community. I've had so many occasions to have enjoyed his company over the past several years. And I'll tell you, very, very enjoyable ones. It's really too much to go into detail because I could speak for hours and hours of the amount of activity that we've shared and the stories we've had and when we've worked together somewhat at 385 Squire Road and in the little office that he shared with Peter Aloisi and I shared with Common Master Giovanni. It was just the, that's where it all started, when this young guy came up and he said, you know, someday I'm gonna run for representative. I said, who the heck's this guy Dickie is, you know? But I'll tell you, since that moment, I believed in him. I've been by his side and ever since, he's been a truthful and loyal friend of mine. He spoke at every one of my fundraisers and he introduced me. He just, he just means a lot to me and my family, as he does for all of you. And I just wanted to offer this out on behalf of the community and our city council. And I know they have some things to say that are nice about you, Mr. Speaker. But before I do that, I would like to read the certificate of merit as it has been prepared. And it reads as follows. City of Revere, certificate of merit. An acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meditative achievement and accomplishment. Special recognition is hereby afforded to Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House of Representatives. In recognition of your retirement after lengthy and successful career in public service, serving the residents of Revere and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for 30 years in the House of Representatives, as a legislator, as a speaker for the past 12 years. The mayor, the city council, on behalf of its residents, wish you the very best in the next step of your illustrious career as a mentor and teacher at your alma mater, Northeastern University. In witness whereof, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed upon by the mayor, the city council, and the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its residents. This 22nd day of February in the year of our lodge, 2021, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 244th. Audit on a roll call by the city of Revere council. Councilor Janino, Guanasso, Keith, McKenna, Morabito, Novoselsky, Powers, Rotundo, Sorino, Visconti, and Council President Zambudo voting in the affirmative. Signed in attestation by our city clerk, Ashley E. Melnick. Signed by our honorable mayor, Brian M. Arigo. Motion offered by Council Guanasso and the Revere City Council. Mr. President, now I would like some of my colleagues, if they would like to speak, say something on behalf of our good friend, Bob DeLeo.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Bobby. A heartfelt thank you to you for the many years that you've helped me. You were a wonderful friend to me and you were a wonderful friend to the residents of Revere. And I want to thank you for helping me achieve the problems that faced my wad while you were in office. I love you. Thank you so much. I hope to keep in touch with everybody on this council because we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Bob DeLeo, you'll never be a former speaker. You'll always be the speaker to me. And we'll call you speaker or we'll call you boss. But those are the main words that I remember you by. We've been together for the last 34 years. And we've been through great times, good times, and bad times. You've always come through for all of us. You're a great, you are, you're a great guy. And you're a great rep, Speaker of the House. You served us proudly. We're glad to have you with us and being a colleague. And we're in government together, so we're colleagues. You know, even though when you're not on the council, we're still colleagues in government. And I want to thank you for all the things that you've done for everybody. And, you know, I remember, you know, when Seth was working in your office and the kids would come in as babies. And now they're all grown up, having professional careers. As you have done so far and continue on to another part of your journey. And I want to congratulate you again, wish you lots of luck, mazel tov. And we'll miss you up at the State House. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Byron.
Before I call on my next colleague, anybody that doesn't need to have their camera on, please shut them off. Until it's time for your presentation or whatever business you have before the council. Thank you very much. Councilor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Speaker.
Yes, sir.
As a newly elected official, if I am able to accomplish 100 of the accomplishments that you during your tenure, my career in the political scene will be a huge success. You are a warm, kind-hearted person that always puts his constituents first. And for that, Revere will miss you. You will be missed amongst us all. And I want to thank you for always putting your constituents first. And thank you for your friendship. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Councilor Morabito.
I'm muted, so one thing they can never do to the speaker, right?
Muted you?
No, I'm muted myself. Mr. DeLeo, I want to thank you for all your years of service. When one thinks of a politician, you know, they think of someone who they can rely on. They also think of a backstabber. They also think of someone who will lie between their teeth. You weren't far from those things. You were a class act. You were a statesman. People could relate with you. And that's one thing that really stood out between you and the other politicians. You really connected and you were really relatable. And I could talk to you and it would feel like we were like the bestest friends, even though we are, you know? But, but no, honestly, you, so much admiration and respect for you from so many people and you're so loved and adored. And your legacy will live on forever, way after you're gone. So I just respect you in so many ways and you're just the ultimate statesman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Speaker, it's really nice to see you. It's really good to have you on here tonight. Thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for, from the time I was an intern, for welcoming me into the State House and over the time working with you, I really got to see your leadership style and how a leader needs to be and should be. And you always led, I always say you led the ship. Like you're the captain that we deserved and that we needed because you led the ship on a very steady course. You never made jerk decisions. You always, you know, kept steady, kept focused. And you've been a tremendous mentor to me and I'm certainly going to miss you up there. It already doesn't feel the same without you up there. And I know that the district especially is going to feel your loss as well. And, but you have been an incredible leader for Revere and for Winthrop and for people here. You really have put your heart into it. You know, not a lot of people realize every year from the time you were, I think, a freshman, but all the way through your speakership, you never forgot the people in your district. You would always, every year, hold a birthday party for Richie Scinelli, who's one of our area's favorite residents. And you always welcomed him up to the State House. And I just, I saw what a compassionate, caring man that you really, you are underneath the leadership side of it. You've just been a wonderful person to work with. So, thank you for everything, Mr. Speaker. And I hope this isn't goodbye. I hope, you know, I hope we all will continue to see you in Winthrop. And my best to Vicki and I hope you get to enjoy your retirement with your grandchildren and spend more time with them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor and Representative Janino.
I don't know where to begin. Mr. Speaker, you are really an inspiration to me and someone that I look up to so much. So, as the representative of Revere, I have huge shoes to fill following in your footsteps and your leadership in the State House. I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city of Revere and for the 19th Suffolk in your years serving us. And, you know, I really want to thank your family for sharing you with us because I don't think people understand that when you get into this business, you know, our families do pay a price because we really take a lot of time away from them. So, thank you to them for sharing you with us for all the years that they did. I hope you have wonderful, I don't want to say retirement, because I don't think you're retiring, but retirement from this position. And I wish you all the best and I truly look up to you and I still will be reaching out to you for guidance, I'm sure. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President and thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I think as some of us younger politicians in the area, we look up to some of our senior leaders and their style and your style that a lot of us like to emulate. When you think about the way that you interact with a lot of the youth in the neighborhoods of Winthrop and Revere and, you know, you have an approachability and that's your humble roots from Revere and Winthrop. You never made yourself look or feel to be more important than anyone else in the room. And, you know, little does everyone know, and well, not everyone knows, that you were for most of the time one of the most powerful men in the state. And, but you never, you never put that out there. You just walked about your job as you were Robert DeLeo. Although, you know, we all did call you Mr. Speaker because we enjoyed using that term and we were very proud of it, especially in Revere and Winthrop. I just really appreciated your style and what you've done for the communities around you. And I know that you won't be going far and we won't, so we won't miss you. But you are someone that we all somewhat aspire to be. So, thank you for being such a great person and congratulations.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Mr. Speaker, friend. I don't know what to call you anymore. The president is... Yeah, you know, I've heard so many times in the past, people running for office or elected to office, so, you know, I'm not a politician, I'm a statesman. You certainly, you certainly have earned the word "statesman" beside your name. Your service, your dedication, always your humility toward others. Unbelievable. And I don't think that's something we'll ever see in the very near future again in the city of Revere or we will see in the town of Winthrop. You're an remarkable person. I want to thank you for all the going into getting information on different topics in your office and always there being sort of lunch. That's not something, if I draw often, some, I want to call them statesmen or politicians, they will let you in the office from my given lunch. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Councilor Rotundo. Counselor, you're on mute. Councilor Rotundo. Here we go.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Yes, there you are.
Hi, boss.
I want to hear you.
But, you know. Was I next?
You're next, you're up. Right ahead.
Thank you. Having some difficulties here. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Excellent. All right, bye-bye, guys. Bob, I can't say enough about you. Whether it was backing the nurses or supporting safe staffing, or for that matter, helping Capic when they needed it for fuel assistance, you've been there for us from the very beginning. And I hope whoever takes your seat is able to meet the goals and aspirations that you set for yourself and make them theirs. I'm just lost for words and I wish you well in your retirement. And maybe we'll see you down at the beach and play some bocce.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Do I have any other councils that, oh, I got, the mayor wants to speak, I guess I'll let him go before me. Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Speaker. I hope you have maybe a bigger room to be in because your head's going to get awfully big with all the great things that everyone's saying. But honestly, thank you for all that you've done for the Commonwealth, but especially for the residents of Revere. And I know we can go through all of the things that you've done and all of the accomplishments that you've had in your tenure. But I want to personally thank you for the great advice that you gave me, I think on one of my first days or nights here. We had a little bit of time before I got sworn in and those are words that I'll never forget and are incredibly just grateful for the fact that, you know, that you're a friend and that you're a mentor and somebody that would take the time to be thoughtful and give some great advice. So, I know we're gonna continue to connect and I look forward to that. But I just had to say thank you. And we're so, so grateful for all that you've done for this city. And the city, the place that we are right now as a city has so much to do with the great work that you've done for our Commonwealth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So it looks like I'm up, I think. I think all my colleagues are shit. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be brief and try not to get emotional, but we'll go back and also one way. You're responsible for me being sitting in this seat right here tonight. I remember knocking on doors with Nita Lewinsky. Hi, I'm Tony Zambuto. Please vote for my dear friend, Bob DeLeo. He'll make a great state representative. What an understatement that was. I mean, you've done more than anybody in the history of the State House. You are a shining and typical of what a speaker should be. And you never forgot where you came from. We were so proud to have you as our leader. Everybody always said, you're not just a representative. And I know what that meant. Everybody talked about your accomplishments. We could go on for like five hours tonight. There's many things to do. My colleague brought up Capic, which I've been on the board. He always went to you for help and you were always there. If that wasn't help for us, that was help for many, many people to get help through that organization. I am most proud to consider you my friend. And I wish you all the best in all you do and nobody deserves it more than you. Thank you for everything and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I say a couple of words?
Absolutely not. This is your time, sir.
You know, I have to tell you, when I received the call from Ashley asking me to come on tonight to be honored, I felt really emotional at that time. And after listening to the words spoken by my, not only the Revere City Council, obviously, but my friend, my heart is pounding. And I can't tell you what that means to me. Now, you're gonna say, well, yeah, you've been through a lot of ceremonies and whatnot. To hear what I just heard from all of you, not so much going into all of your comments, what, you know, local aid and school aid and whatnot, but talking to me as a person, about me as a person, I can't tell you what that means to me. Because that's the way I always wanted to be remembered. You know, I had expected at some point, maybe when I left, that I would sort of do a tour around the city of Revere with the council, maybe with the school committee and so on and so forth, to thank each and every one of you. But the pandemic took care of that. It wasn't so much a tour that I was looking for citations or anything like that, but a tour just to say a sincere thank you. I'm enjoying my time at Northeastern, I have to say. Although my computer skills are lacking and I have to be on a weekly basis just with that. That's been my biggest chore. I'd have to say I served with great people, obviously up at the house, whether it was Billy Reinstein or Kathy Reinstein or Rosalie Vincent. And obviously, I wish I had the opportunity to observe with Jessica Janino, who I've heard in my discussions with the present speaker that she's doing extremely well and I think she's gonna make her mark on the city. I've been fortunate. I've been fortunate, as we just witnessed, to have an unbelievable relationship with all of you. Whether it was the mayor, whether it was the school superintendent, the school committee, or tonight here at the city council. Obviously, that was very important to me. And sometimes representatives and senators can't go out on that type of note in terms of having that type of relationship. It wasn't so much a relationship of a Mr. Speaker whenever I was around the city or saw any of you on the street or a restaurant or a ballgame or whatever, football game or whatever. It was always, hey, Bobby, what's going on? And that's the type of relationship that we had. It was a friend. It wasn't a matter of anything else. And Arthur, I appreciate you really not going into a lot of the stories that you and I maybe have had together. I really, I really do. But I have to tell you what I learned about the people from the city. I have to tell you that as I went through the Commonwealth and traveled throughout the Commonwealth, I can't think of a group of people like the people from the city of Revere who entered their homes, who trusted me, who respected me and would reelect me a number of times. I hope there were some people from the city who may be watching because I can't think of a more kind and decent people than there are in the city of Revere. And for that, I sincerely thank them. When I took this job, I said that I would never forget where I came from and who I represented. And I'm proud to say that I believe anyways that I kept that pledge. I can remember when I first got in, there was a Boston newspaper who talked about the fact that Bob DeLeo's the speaker and he should remember now he's a statewide person. And not so much a local representative. Because he always seems to talk about what's happening in his district and how his vote's gonna affect his district. I never apologized for that and after 30 years, I never will. Because quite frankly, that was the most important thing to me. When I made my remarks, when I had left, I sort of went off script at one point. And one of the things that I had stated was, remember one thing, I said this to all of my former colleagues. If you can remember anything that you're involved with in this place, remember that you're there to help people. That's what our job is all about. Yeah, we could talk about so many different issues and those are important as well because they help you help people. But when you need someone, whether it's a senior citizen or it's a child or whatever it may be, someone who may be a little bit down on their luck. One of the things that I was most proud of is although maybe I couldn't be successful every time, I tried each and every time to help people. I always looked at myself as that's what I was there for. And with some of the notes that I had received by some of the folks that I couldn't even remember how long ago I had done something or helped them, it was really gratifying to me. So as you can probably tell, I can't tell you what this means to me. And you know me well enough to know that I'm not a faker and I can't fake things like this. But to hear the words that I heard tonight from each and every member of the council and the kindness and wanting to be remembered like that, wanting to remember as a guy who was just another person, not looking because of however I escalated up to be speaker, but just to be remembered as a person who tried to help people, who tried to help the great people of the city of Revere in any way that I could. I know that I probably have gone on too long and I apologize if I did. But this was a really important night for me. And I sincerely want to thank you for making it such a special night, a night that I will never, ever forget. for making it such a special night, a night that I will never, ever forget. And by the way, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. At least I hope I'm not going anywhere. And if any of you need to take a class or you want to get your, another degree, please give me a call. I'd love to have you in my class. I can assure you you'll do well. I shouldn't say that. That's not how I think this should be. I get myself in trouble for that. But again, just at closing, it's been a great ride. It's been my privilege to call each and every one of my friends. My friends, not just colleagues, but friends. People of the street city, the elected officials, like family. Not colleagues. You know, it's not constituents, it's friends. And that's what family's all about. My sincere thank you for your extremely kind words.
We love you, Bob. Thank you.
God bless. Thank you very much.
I'll put this in the mail tomorrow.
Thank you. You can go on with your meeting now and your important business. Thank you.
Stay well, my friends. Stay well.
Okay, we'll see you around.
You are the important business, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Great job, guys. Great jobs. Truly impressed.
Keep those stories to yourself.
Hey Vicki, you're behind the guys. Vicki, you're behind the guys.
I know. I can't even, I am overwhelmed by what I just heard, by the way.
You should be. You should be.
Thank you.
Okay, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay well.
All right, calendar item number four. A certificate of appreciation will be awarded to Ms. Fatu Dramay in recognition of her commitment and dedication to our community.
Counsel Keefe, I believe. Oh, no.
I know Counsel Serena wanted to.
I'll get to Serena first. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Fatu is truly an angel in our community who goes above and beyond to help the people of Revere. In her day job, she's the coordinator of the Revere Community School, which provides continuing education programs to the residents of our city. However, her work far goes far beyond a typical nine-to-five lifestyle. Since the beginning of the COVID pandemic nearly a year ago, Fatu has been a key member of the city's COVID response team. She has fielded hundreds of calls, if not thousands, of community members who have found themselves without an income, unable to leave their homes, or in fear that they may be without food or shelter for themselves or their families. And she was one of the first people in those early days of pandemic staffing the senior center where the city's food operations for the pandemic began. Fatu often works 12-hour days, seven days a week. She has spent hours helping nonprofits apply for and secure grant funding, ensuring critical public health information is being disseminated in multiple languages and has facilitated the delivery of Chromebooks to seniors and families across Revere who don't have access to a connected device at home. Her efforts during the COVID crisis have been described as instrumental to the work of our city's outreach by the city's wellness team. Outside of the craziness of the pandemic, Fatu has 30 years' experience working in the field of social justice, economic development, participatory adult education and program development. And she received her master's degree from the Heller Graduate School at Brandeis University. Prior to joining the Revere Community School, Fatu was the founding executive director of Women Encouraging Empowerment, which is WE, a nonprofit organization in Revere that works to educate, advocate, protect and advance the rights of women in our city. She also worked for the Cooperative Economics for Women as a trainer, curriculum developer and associate director. Fatu is presently a board member of the Haymarket People's Fund, WE, and a core group member of the Network for African-American and Immigrant in Solidarity of Boston. And she also serves on the Revere Cares Coalition. When I spoke with Fatu recently, she said about her work, "When I wake up in the morning each day, I just strive to make life better for at least one person in our community." We can all agree that Fatu has helped countless people in our city over the years. And as a city council, we recognize Fatu's efforts and we appreciate all that she does with regard to outreach and assistance to many of our most vulnerable residents. So Fatu, thank you and congratulations. And I'm gonna read the certificate that I believe is going to be given to you or mailed to you tomorrow. So our certificate of appreciation says, "In acknowledgement to Fatu Dramay, in acknowledgement of her commitment and dedication to the city of Revere by founding Women Encouraging Empowerment, a local nonprofit organization that works to educate, advocate for and protect the most vulnerable populations in our community and by going above and beyond to connect residents with the proper resources throughout the COVID pandemic, special recognition is hereby awarded to Fatu Dramay. Revere is a better city due to her work ethic and the devotion exhibited throughout her entire personal and professional work to advance the causes of social justice, economic prosperity, participatory adult education and program development for vulnerable populations does not go unnoticed. In witness whereof, the certificate of appreciation is gratefully bestowed by the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 22nd day of February in the year of our Lord 2021 and of the Independence of the USA 244th. Attested hereby of Ashley E. Melmick, City Clerk, and Anthony T. Zambuto, Council President, and offered by counselors Serena, Genino and Keefe." So Fatu, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Genino.
Mr. President, Fatu, congratulations and thank you for all that you do for our community. You know, you are so supportive of just people that need help. And there's so much to be said about someone like you that really is like an unsung hero in our community. You come to work every day, you do your job impeccably and you do it for no other reason than the fact that you love helping people and you genuinely care. And you can see that in your work. You can see that when people are watching you help people and it really is inspiring. So thank you for showing up every day and for giving 110%. And I hope other people in our community can look up to you and what you've accomplished and what you strive to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Fatu. I don't understand how we became so fortunate to have you reside in our city. I don't know where it all started, but everything that you do, it's just really good. And you know, I use, I know Counsel Serena mentioned some of your early support during the pandemic. But this support goes back to our community for many, many years, working with the Revere Community School and you're a leader in that building. But then, as mentioned, we see it. You know, us counselors, we try to do a lot to help out with the community. But, and there's just a lot, there's people out there like you that spend so much extra time after work, before work. And you know, I was there helping a lot with the food operations early on with Deb over at the senior center and then over at the Romney Marsh Academy. And Fatu would, she would leave her job and come over and jump in and help out, packs and bags and take them to some residents. But before her work, she'd come in and, what can I do to help? You know, and that was an everyday occurrence. So people like you really make this community moving. We were very, very fortunate to get you to live in our city. And you know, you are a true community asset. I did get you a little notepad that I'm gonna drop off for the car just to give to you. You know, we all, I think, not a lot of people knew who Amanda Gorman was before the inauguration. I'm not gonna pretend to say that I knew who she was. But man, was she inspiring. And I think of you when I think of the inspiration that she gave. You may not be a poet, but some of the words that she said, I really think of you. There was always, there was always light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it, Amanda Gorman. And that was one of her quotes. And I think of you when I see quotes like this. So I wanted you to have this as a little bit of a notepad to use in your daily work. I just, I'm so thankful to have you. So.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fatu, when I was a teacher, it was a pleasure working with you at Revere High School. And I just want to thank you for all that you do for the city, the people and the children of Revere. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Nova Selsby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fatu, I remember the first day you came up to me and said, "Ira, we need a new home." You know, I guess they were meeting on Broadway and they needed bigger space. And I said, "I know you want to help people and I want to help people." And I think I came through for you and that was almost six years ago. And we gave you the use of the Jewish War Veterans Hall at Phipi Waldorf. They had some great classes there for these new folks coming into the city to speak English and all the training that they gave and their computers. And they built up that little hall and work area to a regular business now. Now they even give out their food, you know, the emergency food for folks coming in that need it. I was in there the other day and all the different supplies that you have waiting for the mothers, the babies, being taken care of. And it's just a pleasure and it has been a pleasure to have you at this location. I love having you there. The Jewish War Veterans want having you there. And I wish you a lot, a lot of luck. You've been great for everybody, everybody that you've touched and within contact. You're a great person. I thank you, thank you, thank you. And I say, "Mazel tov."
Thank you, Ira. Love you too.
Counsel Morabito. You're on mute.
Fatu, how are you? I've known you for a very long time. Your work never, never has gone unnoticed with me. Counsel Keefe mentioned Amanda Gorman. One thing with that young lady is that her voice resonated with the whole world and her words were so amazing. And you have helped so many people in the community by letting them know that they must express their voice. And you've mentored so many people in our community. And I thank you for that because you let them realize that their voice matters. And one of my first slogans when I ran for office was "A choice for a new voice." And one thing you probably don't remember what you said to me is you said, you know, I noticed you say "a choice for a new voice," that has to be every voice. Just remember that. You said it has to be every voice. And that resonated with me to this day. And I hope as long as I'm on this council, whether someone's a senior citizen, whether they're black, brown, white, Italian descent, Muslim heritage, religion, I hope I stick to my slogan and always represent everyone's voice. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Counsel Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fatu, thank you for all the work you've done and all the work that you continue to do in our community. It's the commitment from people like yourself that makes Revere such a welcoming community. We are so lucky to have you in our community. And I want to congratulate you on this commendation. It's well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm trying, I'm, I'm on mute.
I think we're having some technical problems here. You're on mute, John. You're on mute, John. Can't hear you.
How about now?
There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be very remiss if I did not pay special appreciation to someone like yourself who by all coordinates have made such a difference in the city of Revere for people, average people, people who sometimes can't help themselves for one reason or another. No matter what their race, religion, creed, what is or was, no matter what they've done in the past, everyone needs a helping hand at some time or another. And I want certainly commend you for offering that service. It isn't too often that we find someone like yourself who is willing to step up there and take the necessary avenue that needs to be taken to help a friend, just a person, not even a friend, just a person they've met or come in contact with that needs some type of a helping hand. From the bottom of my heart and I know from the citizens of this city, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Gennaro.
Mr. President, although I don't know you, I certainly hear quite a bit about you. And the title that I think is most deserving from everything I hear is "Big Sister." You really certainly have gone to our community and offered out your services and your support wherever it was needed, for whoever needed it. And for that, the city of Revere should be forever grateful. I just briefly interviewed you in reference to when you were appearing before a very important part of our community as an applicant. And in your review and in your presentation, you were downright honest, sincere and objective. You can't ask for more qualities in a person than that. We certainly, as a community and civic leaders and leaders of our community, recognize your ability. I don't have a need so much to go to the high school because my children are well beyond a high school age. But what I hear from other parents, and I have several friends that do have children there, you are just one heck of a nice person. You do great things for the kids. You serve our community so well. And I can't thank you enough personally. And this is the honor that I think has best bestowed upon you to show how we as a community feel about you. So keep up the good work, keep up the big title, "Big Sister." And certainly, we all recognize, even though we might not say it, weekly, daily, we know it and we mean it and we appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Rattendo.
Thank you very much.
We're having some volume. Speak up, George.
Okay. Fatu, you are.
They're cutting out George.
Can't hear me, guys?
Now we can hear you.
All right. Fatu, for the third time, you are the epitome of the American dream. Coming here from Gambia, graduating Brandeis University, starting up WE, contributing to our community in words that I can't articulate. I am so grateful for what you do to help people in our community. And the most important thing is that you serve a very important part of our community, immigrants, women of domestic violence, women in need. And for me, that strikes a chord in me that I can't even speak about. But I thank you for what you do. I truly, truly do. And I thank you for the people that you've helped in our community. Counsel Keefe, this was a great motion. Well deserved, ma'am. Well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief, but I just.
I will be brief, but I just wanted to congratulate Fatou on this well-deserved honor. I want to thank the council for recognizing her work and so much that she's done for our residents and for our community. Just, I'm extremely grateful for everything that you do, Fatou. And I know everyone on this council and so many of our residents are so grateful for everything that you do. And again, I want to express my gratitude to the council for recognizing Fatou and so many folks that have stepped up. You know, I think of what Fatou has done during the pandemic has been truly amazing. But the work that she's doing now and that she has done, she's been doing for years. And so much that we've learned through these challenging times is that we need to invest in the work that Fatou does. And it's been, I think, long overlooked. And we're prepared now as we move through the next phases of the pandemic and as we see the light in the tunnel, we're all kind of coming out of it together, thinking about how we invest and make sure that that the work that Fatou does and the work that so many people have contributed to continue. So again, thank you for all that you do. Thank you for all the roles that you serve, from the Housing Board to your work with the city. You've just been an incredible partner in this work to uplift our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Fatou, it's pretty tough for me to add to what's been said about you. A short of thank you. But we heard Speaker Delio talk about that we're all in this business to help people. And you are obviously the epitome of helping people of all kinds. And we are truly grateful for your service to our city. And I want to wish you all the best.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I wanted to thank all the councilors for this award, especially Councilor Keith, Janino, and Richie for putting this motion. And for all of you for giving me this award, I am grateful. I'm very humbled and honored to be receiving this award during Black History Month and on the same day that you guys are recognizing one of my favorite political leaders, who is Speaker Delio. Delio has been one of the leaders who really helped me at the starting of WE. He was there in passing, coming into the office, talking to us, giving us money, giving us sponsorship to give to low-income families to take their kids to after-school programs like Summer Camps. So he has been very, very supportive to me. And Ira, I cannot thank you enough. Ira has been the one who basically helped us build this foundation for this purpose. Without his support, I don't think that we would be in the city. We would have closed our door a long time ago because getting a space was really hard. But Ira really helped me and the organization to have a space where we can run our programs. And something that started like eight years ago now is supporting more than, you know, so many people, especially during this pandemic, like hundreds and hundreds of families have been supported by WE. And I cannot do this job without all of the political leaders in the city supporting me and encouraging me and all of your kind words. I do appreciate it, really. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much. Thank you. I share this award with all of the Revere superheroes, all of the residents who came out during the pandemic, coming together, trying to help our residents get whatever they needed to make sure that the city is taken care of. I share this with everyone. And I thank my family who is here today, my staff members, my friends, and all of my colleagues who are here today, cheering me on. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. I am lucky to be in this city. The city is not lucky to have me. I'm happy to, I'm happy and I'm lucky to be accepted by the city to be in this position today. I thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Challenge item number five, public hearings. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the establishment of the Revere Riverfront Overlay District.
Proponents. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to briefly state a word of thanks for the folks who took the time and effort to be part of our Development Advisory Group that really came up with this master plan that's before you. For far too long, the area that we're focused on, the Revere Riverfront District, is one that's been severely overlooked and one that I think will really be a tremendous improvement for our city. If you think about the location, and I think some of us become numb to the fact that you have this hodgepodge of industrial uses and open space and uses that are not complementary and not really compatible. But it's been like that for so long that, you know, it kind of takes a little bit of time to really understand how it could be improved. And that's exactly what this master plan is attempting or will attempt to do. When I presented our ideas about the Riverfront District to the Seaport Economic Council that's chaired by the Lieutenant Governor and includes a number of state and local leaders, I can't tell you the reaction that I saw on people's faces when we walked through, we walked through the whole district and showed, you know, what is there now and what will hopefully be there in the next couple of years. And just the idea of transforming a former tow yard and kind of garage space is one thing. But when you think about the boatyard and what that's looked like and how that's really diminished over the course of a number of years, this really, this product that's before you, this master plan, represents, you know, a real dynamic change to that neighborhood. And in some respects, for those of you who don't know, I know a number of you were on our Development Advisory Group meetings. But for the councilors who weren't, this planning process that went into creating this master plan was really similar in some respects to what we did with Suffolk Downs in terms of getting a group together to really think through all of the different aspects that this site has. And, you know, this is a 20-acre district, obviously not the 160 acres that Suffolk Downs represents. But it is a much more visible location, I would say, and one that can be transformed in a much quicker timeframe. At the end of the day, the Riverfront District really, truly is our, one of our gateways. And it's a northern gateway to the city. And so for it to be the North Shore's first impression of Revere is important. And so that gateway at this point doesn't really provide a particularly inviting gateway. But it really, truly does have the opportunity to do that. And we will see that through with this master plan. So I want to thank you for the time that's been allotted. I want to thank all of the Development Advisory Group members who took the time out to dig into some of the details, to look at, you know, all of the aspects of this district and how we can improve this whole section of the city. And I want to thank especially the staff led by Bob O'Brien. We had tremendous staff support to get this done in, you know, a pretty quick turnaround, but one that was very thoughtful and complete and one that I'm very proud of. So with that, again, I want to thank you and thank the staff who took the time to make this a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other proponents, Frank Strangie.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And I was just sitting here thinking, this will be the fourth overlay district that we have created in the city, going back to Overlook Ridge, Overlay District, the Wonderland TOD Overlay District, and the Suffolk Downs Overlay District. And this overlay district is somewhat special. As the mayor said, it's not as large as the other ones, but it occupies the northwest corner of our city in the Point of Pines. And it's been unsightly for years. A real eyesore coming over the GE Bridge. And this is the location up here. Everybody knows the GNJ Mirage Site. It's been run long enough, you know, Jacob's Ladder, going back further to Lobster Cabin, and on the GNJ Site, the Follows Marina. So over the years, it's been occupied by industrial uses that really didn't serve the city well, that part of the riverbanks of the pines and Saugus River. So like the mayor mentioned, this overlay district is an outgrowth of the Riverfront Master Plan. And its main objective is to repurpose this area of the waterfront as a public use asset for Revere residents and to encourage residential and economic development along this underutilized section of the city. The area is presently zone light industrial, has been primarily used as a boat storage and tow yacht facility, as well as contractor storage yard, and really has been a black eye for Revere at the city's northern gateway and approaching over the Genoa River Bridge. So to better redefine this area and activate this long-neglected shoreline, it has become necessary to provide incentives for redevelopment in a manner that complements and enhances the area's riverfront assets for both public and private use. One of the main barriers to public access in this area has been the lack of accessible waterfront walkways and woodwalks due to the storage of materials, equipment, and disturbance along the riverbank. This overlay district will serve as a catalyst to remove these barriers and restore the riverfront to its natural beauty and activate the area with public amenities. So in terms of density, height, and open space, this overlay district has been structured to include provisions for larger open space requirements and less density than other overlay districts and mixed-use districts within the city. For instance, it places a building cap of no more than six stories, places a more restrictive floor area ratio of 1.75 compared to FARs of 3.0 and higher in other districts, places a public open space requirement of 10%, where most districts don't even require any, and provides for greater setbacks in the typical developments that exist along the beachfront and waterfront square. So if I had to make a comparison in terms of building scale that we could see there, I would say that the beach house is more compatible to the scale and massing that the Riverfront Overlay District would allow. Although even then, the beach house has an FAR of 2.5 compared to the 1.75 FAR of the Riverfront Overlay District. So in terms of comparison, even the beach house is larger in scale and density that would be allowed in the Riverfront Overlay District. Now, in terms of uses, the Riverfront Overlay District will prohibit industrial and commercial uses that are intrusive to the riverfront zone. Uses such as towing operations and storage, contractor storage yards, warehouses, product distribution facilities, commercial garages, auto body shops, commercial parking lots and auto storage parking, automotive truck rental offices and storage, both Class 1 and 2 automotive sales, fast food takeout, drive-through services, car washes, and general manufacturing repair facilities are all prohibited uses within the new overlay district. Uses that would be allowed include health clubs and recreational uses, professional office, restaurants, hotel, brewery, distillery, or winery, including the brew pubs, general retail and neighborhood retail, marina, condominium and apartment, townhouses, independent elderly housing, farmers' markets, community gardens. We also included research and development facilities for the life science industry, just to open a door for biotech if the market allows. Now, with respect to parking, this has been a major topic of conversation. Replace a minimum ratio of one space per unit for residential condominium and apartment use. This is just a baseline. Additional parking will be required by the Site Management Committee if the market demand requires. Right now, we are seeing a parking ratios of less than one space per unit for those multifamily residential developments already occupied along the beachfront. There are provisions in this ordinance mechanical and automated parking system if the demand changes. In addition, developers will be required to apply transportation demand management measures by the Site Management Committee, such as requiring the cost of onsite parking within the resident leases, requiring onsite car sharing services such as Zipcar, requiring onsite covered and secured bicycle storage facilities, requiring regularly scheduled shuttle buses to and from Wonderland Station for residents. So the bottom line, no responsible developer will be able to market a residential building without providing the necessary onsite parking. And given the fact that there will be not any on-street parking available to residents of the old front overlay district, the developer must ensure that there is sufficient resident parking onsite and visitor parking. So I feel comfortable that given the current multifamily residential parking data and trends that increasingly show less than one space per unit, that any residential development on this site will have the capacity to meet the parking demand required. And finally, what I think is one of the most beneficial aspects of this overlay district is the requirement that all proposed projects within the Riverfront Overlay District must make a contribution to the Community Improvement Trust Fund in an amount equal to 1% of the total building construction cost. All these monies contribute to the Community Improvement Trust Fund for projects within the Riverfront Overlay District shall be extended only on public open space and infrastructure improvement projects outlined in the Riverfront Master Plan. These funds should go a long way in advancing some of the more important public improvements that will help recreate the Riverfront District as an active and attractive gateway to the city of Revere from the North Shore and beyond. So I just want to thank you for considering this transformational overlay district. And that word has been used a lot. And I think every overlay district that we've created has been transformational. And I look forward to answering any questions after all the proponents have been heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strangie. Other proponents, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bob O'Brien. I live at Ten Ocean Avenue in Revere, and I'm chief of planning and development for the city of Revere. But more pertinent perhaps to this particular discussion, I was privileged to be the moderator for the Development Advisory Group that informed the Riverfront Master Planning Process. And in that regard, I must publicly acknowledge and applaud the remarkable work that that group did in a relatively short period of time. That certainly includes the informed members of the Riverside and Point of Pines community that were exceptionally active in that process. But also, as the mayor suggested, all of the city agencies that were involved. And of course, our elected officials, many of whom sit on this body. Patrick Keith was the president of the council when the process began. And, Mr. President, you were the president when it ended, and you were both involved in this process. Jessica Janino, in addition to her role as city councillor, was the representative-elect when we began and is now a state representative and made invaluable contributions. Ricky Serino, representing then-state Representative Rosalie Vincent, as well as his own capacity. And certainly, most of all, Board Councillor John Powers. I mean, in many respects, the Riverfront Master Plan represents the culmination and realization of goals that John has been advocating for for many years. many years long before this process began, certainly including the conversion of the Riverside Boat Works to civic and community purposes. But also, as everyone knows, his advocacy for the Revere Fire Station, uh, at Point of Pines, which is a part of the Riverfront Overlay District, is well-known to all. And of course, he's been a champion for redevelopment of the G and J Site as well. So in many respects, uh, this represents the culmination of, uh, John's goals and objectives for this district that he represents. And we thank all of you for, for that input and feedback, which was invaluable. Uh, we, of course, also benefited from a very accomplished consultant team that include Arrow Street Architects, Copley Wolf Landscape Architects, and Lloyd's Registered Engineers, who really developed from the input of all of the people I referred to above, uh, and put together a really comprehensive and quite remarkable document that is now before you. And last but by no means least, uh, the Redgate Development Team. Uh, in many respects, uh, Redgate's interest in the redevelopment of this property was the catalyst for this effort, and they have provided invaluable, um, professional, uh, contributions to the process throughout. And, uh, I, I need to acknowledge them all. Uh, and finally, to the planning board who adopted the Riverfront Master Plan, uh, unanimously earlier this month. Uh, we are now dealing with the zoning overlay process, which is a, an important next step in this process. As Frank has ably described, um, what is envisioned for the redevelopment of these sites, uh, was simply not possible given current zoning. And I commend, uh, Frank for fashioning a truly responsive and responsible and comprehensive overlay district, which, as he pointed out, will be the first time a community investment trust fund, uh, contribution will be required from a project, uh, that actually meets zoning. As you probably know, typically CIT contributions are only made for projects which do not conform to zoning. So this is a really important next step in the process. It is not, however, the only next step. Uh, we, we need to move forward on the transportation improvements that are an integral part of the master plan, and we are doing so with the Commonwealth now to fund those all-important and foundational, uh, improvements to the roadway system in the area. We need to move forward on city acquisition of the Revere Boat Works. And we are now in the process with the support of the council of getting an appraisal on that property. We need to demolish the existing fire station and get the new fire station underway, which is already in process as well. And we have to fund, uh, many of the improvements that are contemplated in this plan. All of these are essential to implementing the plan. But the first step in that direction is the approval of this overlay district. It will be, of course, referred to the zoning committee before it is acted upon by the council. And I'm sure many of the questions that can't be addressed tonight will be addressed in that process. But I, on behalf of, uh, the city of Revere, heartily recommend your approval of this overlay district. It will make all of a difference in the world to the northern sector of Revere for all of the reasons the mayor and Frank have alluded to. And I unequivocally urge your support of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, other proponents, Bob Mara.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to speak, uh, on the project, uh, having been a member of the Development Advisory Group and also, um, af- as a, as a resident of the Point of Pines. Uh, you know, it's funny, the mayor commented that the, the Riverfront District has been overlooked over the years. More to the point, it didn't even exist until this current vision came into focus. This ordinance creates an opportunity that I think people have dreamed about for years. We can literally remodel the front door of our city for those who are coming from the north down Route 1A. To change that area from what is essentially a tow yard, uh, in some respects, a junkyard, uh, and a ball field and a park that really isn't used to its full extent, to make that change is revolutionary. The, the idea of a riverwalk, uh, the chance to connect the Point of Pines and Riverfront shorelines, improved open space, a community boating center. As I said, these, these have been little more than dreams. And now we have an ordinance before this city council that makes all of those dreams reality. The, uh, the plan that was approved by the Development Advisory Group and by the planning board addresses critical traffic issues, flooding issues, and these are, the, the resolution of these issues or the, the, the attention to these issues will have a positive impact on the entire neighborhood, uh, far beyond just the immediate overlay area. It's, and the key that unlocks all of this is the development plan that can take place, uh, as a result of this overlay district ordinance. As, as Bob O'Brien just mentioned, Redgate's interest in the project assures the city of another landmark address in our city, and it will be spurred by a company that has proven itself as a distinguished, uh, member of the community, not only in the building end of things, but in just being good neighbors. So I urge, uh, as a resident of the Pines and as a member of the, uh, Development Advisory Group, I urge the city council to act favorably on this. I know it's going to committee, but I hope this will have, uh, the full support of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next, uh, proponent, Al Baker.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, councilors, for having, allowing me the opportunity to speak as a proponent this evening. Uh, Revere has made great strides in improving assets across the city, and I'd like to echo some of the sentiments previously mentioned here, not really to be repetitive, but due to the emphasizing their relevance. Uh, the Riverfront Master Plan is yet another way that the city has collaborated with residents and elected officials alike to advance the potential of this underutilized region. As Bob Mara mentioned, it wasn't even mentioned as a region previous to this plan. And I think that it's long overdue. And we need to take back this riverfront area. And this plan really does incorporate so many elements that should be considered with every development or, or every zoning, um, consideration. This plan considers improvement to resiliency. It enhances recreational facilities. The community boating in itself is just creating a waterfront access that we've never had. We're on the water and we don't have a place to launch kayaks or canoes or anything like that. So, I mean, that really is going to be a community asset that's going to be enjoyed for many years to come. And then, when we move back to providing alternative traffic patterns to the folks that are in the riverside on Mills Ave, I mean, creating a better recreational facility will also bring people there, and that's the perfect alternative to do that. Um, we also just want to echo what people have said about entering into the city, and then we look, and that's what we see. To the right is, the gateway to the city is a, a dump, basically a dump for cars, vehicles that have been abandoned or towed. So changing and transforming that area is, is a dream, really, for all of the residents that take that corner every day. So the zoning overlay being the next step to transform this industrial eyesore into a prosperous, welcoming space, a metamorphosis from blight to butterfly is, is really just what's going to happen if this really comes into play. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I urge you to consider voting favorably for this overlay district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, other proponents, Eric Climbadeekio.
Good evening. Eric Climbadeekio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Um, you guys have heard some of the amazing things that this very forward-thinking and proactive planning process has really brought together. And it's really creating a, a beautiful vision for the area. Some of the highlights of this, um, include additional recreational facilities at Gibson Park and keep, keeping Gibson Park green, including new features like a bocce court, pickleball, a dog park. Uh, those are just some of the benefits that we're hoping to gain from this planning process. Um, in addition to those, the discussion around repurposing the boatyard has gone on for several years. As early back is probably 2017, when Council Rotondo had put in a motion to have the city acquire that property and repurpose that building. So it's very exciting that the prospect of that coming to fruition is a very real and very possible reality. Other benefits include a traffic pattern change, which divert traffic from the Mills Avenue Riverside area. And instead, that traffic would pass through by the fire station to a roundabout to access the park. So changing the access point to the park is a crucial component that will help mitigate some of the traffic concerns in the riverside area. The GE Bridge is also on the docket to be rebuilt in the next decade or so. And this plan also allow, allows for some proactive planning for the on-ramps to accommodate that process. So I thought it was really awesome that the, the developer and the engineering team really were thinking far, far, far down the road as to when some of these things might come to fruition. With every project has pros and cons, and some of the things that I'm concerned about, uh, are in regards to the density of the project, where we don't have a set number yet. Uh, we're told somewhere between 260 to 290 units. I'd like to get that number nailed down a little bit further in this ordinance if we could. Uh, I also have some concerns around the parking variance, uh, going to a one-to-one where other similar prod- similar properties that are zoned RC1 are 1.6 ratio. We're pursuing a one-to-one ratio here, which is a little bit of a drastic change. Uh, but most importantly, I feel that this might be a bit premature. In our final meeting of the development group, we were told that the first step would be for the city to acquire the boatyard. And I feel like we may be putting the cart before the horse here, but I just want to know if anybody could speak to any of those three concerns, uh, that's with us on the call today, given that this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next proponent, Julie Demora.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, uh, letting me, giving me a chance to speak. I want to just reiterate some of the, um, transportation aspects that Eric beat me to in highlighting tonight. But I think, you know, this project is going to be, uh, a win-win for the city for so many different reasons. And we're going to have, um, increased access to the waterfront. Uh, we're going to improve the waterfront, um, and, and it will become more of a living shoreline. We're going to be able to have a boat launch with the, um, construction of the community boating center, um, as a place for families and children to learn, um, you know, rowing, canoeing, and just have an opportunity to really explore that side of the city. Um, as many of you know, Al and I have practiced many row road or Revere, uh, practice runs on the riverside, and it is really quite a beautiful place to explore if you can get out there. Um, but getting to the point about the transportation initiatives that will be brought on, um, the reconstruction of the ramps to improve access directly to that site is going to be, um, significant for not just the residents of Mills Ave, um, in John's Road and in that area. It will, it will alleviate a lot of that congestion of people trying to cut through to get there to go through the park. But it also will help improve, um, some of the traffic on Route 1A, um, in the morning peak hours. Um, there is not only just the ramps, but there's other additional traffic mitigation, um, issues that we are trying to work with, not only with Matt Stott, but also with the MBTA. And this opens us up to additional opportunities to improve traffic flow throughout the whole corridor. Um, and I also want to highlight, um, Frank's point about the, um, the, uh, the different, um, traffic management plan on the, on the property itself, um, in addition to, um, the shuttle buses and the bike ramp of the bike storage, and that it will also looking to expand Blue Bikes into that area. And that would be a great connection because they'll be able to, um, ride to the Wonderland T-stop straight from, um, from the development and not having to access 1A. So I am in favor of the project for a lot of reasons, um, and I hope you'll vote favorably as well. I think John Powers, uh, Council Powers has his hand up. I think he raised his hand.
Can anyone hear me now? I just, I didn't hear myself.
Council Powers, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, President. I think John Schu was next.
Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead and.
Um, Mr. President, point to parliamentary procedure. Mr. President, can you hear me?
Mr. President, you're muted.
State your point. State your.
Um, I believe, uh, there are questions on the floor, and it's my understanding that during a hearing, any times there are questions on the floor, they should be answered.
We go through proponents, then opponents, then councillors, and then questions.
Very well, thank you.
John Schu.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm a resident in the Point of Pines and a community member on the Development Advisory Group Front. I'm also, uh, just retired about six months ago, and as a former executive of a hydroelectric company in New England, I had the opportunity to work with a lot of communities for all of our, our plants were located. I want to talk a little bit and just let you guys know this, this process, how well it went. It was very well organized. Um, and from where I sat, the whole planning process was sensitive to the concerns of all the stakeholders, and it included elected officials advocating strongly on behalf of the residents. There were multiple stakeholder meetings, and each time, uh, and, and I commend the city staff here and the architect consulting team, they made sure everyone had a chance to share concerns and comments, and then incorporated those into the next iteration of the plan. All of this contributed to a well-thought-out plan, which I am in favor of and you will support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other proponents? I'm not seeing any.
Council President, there's one attendee.
Okay. Who is it?
Michael Tucker.
Mr. Tucker. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Hello, Michael Tucker, 9 Albertson Street, Revere. I just want to voice that I am a proponent, very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. See, Nick Malanson, I don't see your hand up, sir. You want to speak?
Yes, please, uh, Council President. I appreciate it. Uh.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So as a, uh, you know, I was on that advisory committee and also chairman of the Conservation Committee. Big issue down there as well that's being taken care of that'll be addressed is right now, there's no flooding management or any stormwater management or any, uh, when the tide comes up, there's no management for that water. With this project, there's going to be a, a, I forget how many millions of gallons of water it'll hold, but underneath the, um, the field is going to hold millions of gallons of water that is hopefully going to alleviate a lot of the flooding issues down in the Mills Ave and Riverside area. So, uh, I'm definitely in favor of this project. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing, seeing no other proponents, we're going to go to opponents. Anybody opposed? I don't see any. This may be the first public hearing I've ever done with other, an opponent. Seeing none, we'll move to councillors. Council Powers.
The, the, the volume on the.
I don't know. Hours. I'm not sure.
I would assume it's a priority to the, the, the subcommittee, I would, I would imagine. I had occasion this morning to spend approximately two hours discussing what I felt the pros and cons of this project, and I received, uh, four. And I received four of that discussion, people from Redgate. Very positive and good answers to my questions. One of my questions was the pump station we installed probably eight, nine years ago. It cost a million dollars. Would that be increased? And if it needed to be increased with a wet mill, who would pay for a wet mill? And the answer was, I later spoke with Frank Stringer on this, and the answer was that the developer would pay for that. And any other programs that directly affected the project. That is to be done so as not to cause any problems for the either Riverside or the Point of Pines neighborhoods. Flooding is, is a, it's a serious issue down there. No question about it. And we are looking to address that right now, and we plan to address that. Okay, traffic, traffic is an issue everywhere. Right now in the city of Lynn, they're under construction of approximately 2,000 units of housing. Now, do we all want to sit back and let everything be built around us? And let all the big tax revenue go to the other cities and towns without doing anything in the city? I think not. At least I could not support that. For long times now, I, you know, I've gone down to the Point of Pines and you drive across, you're heading north and you drive across the GE Bridge. Particularly maybe nine months out of the year, and you look at all the picturesque settings over the hot tub, you look at the Point of Pines neighborhoods themselves. And then you walk across and what do you see? A junkyard, a tow yard, something that in no way belongs in that area. And that just doesn't belong there. It's an insult to the residents that live down there. So this is a project that needs the council's support. No question about it. In fact, tonight I want to thank Derek O'Leary. I want to thank Bob O'Brien, Frank Stringer, Al Baker, and Jay Demaro, and anyone else in that department that was involved in this. And I also want to thank my colleagues on the city council, who a couple of years ago, when I looked to amend the zoning down in the boatyard, so you could reach a boat like this, 100% support. When I asked my colleagues for support for the Point of Pines fire station, wow, 100% support. And I feel very confident that I will receive that same support, not just myself, but the residents of the Point of Pines.
Council, we lost your volume, I'm afraid.
Taking a, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, John, we can now.
Can you imagine someday a student at Revere High School taking rolling lessons down on the river down there and going to a college somewhere in Massachusetts or anywhere else and receiving a scholarship for their, for their expertise in rolling, rolling that they learned in Point of Pines, the city of Revere. These are the all the positive things that can come from this. And as I said in the beginning, obviously, this is going to be going to a, a committee. And we'll have all the time in the world to make more comments and ask questions. And I'm sure we are will. And I'm sure the residents will too. And any of the residents that I've talked to down in Point of Pines, they 100% in favor of this. They want to see it happen. It's a positive thing. And I also spoke with Frank Stringer today, and he's informed me that he is going to set up a construction management team. So whatever goes on down there, we figure out to construction, drainage, whatever. He, this team will be right on top of that and will be down correctly. So again, I urge my colleagues to attend the meetings, to support this. It's a great thing for the community. It's a long overdue. And I feel very confident that with your support, this will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Council Powers. Council Laura Vito.
Thank you. I want to thank the Community Development Department and Economic Development and Planning for your participation, also the Advisory Board Committee. Without your attendance at the meetings and your input, this would never come to fruition. So thank you. It's a very important process, and I'm glad you guys were all a part of it. I want to thank Council Powers for being all in with this project as well. And Damian and Redgate for listening to the neighbors. There's obviously some concerns that we will hash out in subcommittee. But, you know, growing up in Revere, there was never a lot to do. One of the big complaints is where everything, we had to go outside of Revere to do everything. Sporting activities, entertainment, green space. And a lot of my friends who lived at the Riverside area and that location moved out of Revere. I'm sure when this development is completed and they visit Revere, they're going to be so amazed and blown out of the water looking at this development. Because I'm so ecstatic about this project because it just really enhances the whole green space, the whole beauty of Revere. And it actually gives, it, it literally is the definition, a place you can live, work, play, and enjoy. You literally don't have to leave that facility for entertainment other than work. I'm, I'm very impressed with the project and I'll save my further comments for subcommittee. So thank you, everyone, for your participation. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, councillors. I appreciate the brevity. This is obviously going to committee because it has to by law. We can be brief. We'll get through the night. Off the key.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned, I do look forward to speaking about this in council zoning committee. And, you know, I think overall the process has been excellent. And the time that it's, people have put in and the, and the work that has been put ahead has been excellent. Certainly, we'll all have some questions. But this has certainly been one of the more transparent processes and projects that the city's done in many, many years. So kudos to all, and I look forward to discussing it in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for being brief. Rotondo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several questions. But before we start, I must reflect upon what former speaker Bob Delio said, it's about the people. And I'm wondering if we had any community meetings with the people at the Point of Pines and at the Riverside? Were they notified and have they been part of this process?
Number one. Number two, is there P and S that's under agreement here? In which the sign off of this ordinance is to make that go through fruition or anything of that nature? Because it seems like when I dealt with the Wonderland Transit Oriented Project, we were taking different pieces and working with the state and so forth, and Frank can speak to this better than I, that there was a, a process in which we put some of these developments out to bed, of the Wonderland Transit Oriented Project out to bed. And I remember that with Mayor Tommy Ambrosino. In fact, I remember that very clearly. However, that said, much of what was pointed out in this 19.2 acre project or overlay district, many of the things that I had fought for in the past and had not been lucky to get. I embrace the idea of community rowing. I think it's something that our children could utilize in order to ascend into college and more importantly, get a, a degree out of it by virtue of a scholarship. But more importantly, the public safety aspects of it, because right now we don't have a peer to support public safety access. I'm unsure right now about who owns the Marina itself. I, I thought it was Gary DeChico. If someone could elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it. And more importantly, G and J site, is there a proposed sale? Because much of this area, I believe, is privately owned. However, again, if someone could tell me if there's something in the works that I don't know about, if you could please forward it, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Council, these, these questions will all be answered in subcommittee.
That said, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, if we could reflect on the questions that I have. If for some reason I'm unable to attend, I will submit them writtenly. Is that okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Council Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to keep my comments brief because I know it'll be going to zoning. However, more just a, a quick comment. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I recently, I had the opportunity to go and I had brunch at a restaurant called Mile Marker One in Gloucester, which is in the Cape and Marina Resort. And when I went up there, it's right on the Anasquam River. The, the restaurant was beautiful. It had a nautical theme to it. It was a really cool place. And I, I said to the person I was with, geez, this would be something wonderful to have in the city of Revere. And I, I think, you know, this, this area, the Riverside area would be where something like that would go. And I just, you know, I, I learned more about it in subcommittee, but I, I'm a little sad to hear that, you know, we're going to pack more residential in that area. I think it would have, it would be a missed opportunity. And with regard to the boatyard, community boating, everything sounds great on its surface. But I do have some questions too about the boatyard because the last I heard, it's privately owned. It's, it's not city property. So, you know, if everything looks good on paper and Lord knows that we've, we've seen a lot of great things on paper at the cities that never materialize or materialize differently than are presented to us. So I look forward to zoning and I will have some, some questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council Giannino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be very brief. I was a part of these meetings and I want to commend the city for the job that they did in really listening to the residents because it was a really great process to be a part of, to see how it changed and developed based on what the input of the community was. And ideally, that's how some of the best projects are done. So I'll save my comments and questions for committee, but really to everyone that's involved, I commend you. This was a great project that I was really proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Council Guerra, so.
Mr. President, this is certainly a tremendous idea, well thought out. It's an opportunity for Revere to be a showcase as an art show. It offers more opportunity for our constituents. It adds to the value of our neighborhoods. The only concern I might have is the residential units. Why so many? Is this, this a main focus or is this a part of it? It shouldn't be because the concept of what we're trying to do here, what has been presented is an unbelievable idea. It's a great idea. So I don't think we should diminish the goodwill of it by putting too many units in there. I know, you know, money has to be driven from some source, but why so many? So when this, this goes to the subcommittee, I will have further review of it. And I thank you for the opportunity of speaking. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council, Miss County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to commend all the time put in by everyone already up to this point. And I will reserve my questions for the subcommittee. But whenever you're able to develop waterfront property, it's a bonus to the city. And like I said, I'd like to reserve some of my questions for a subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Bob O'Brien, you have something?
Mr. President, I could respond to the questions that were raised unless you would prefer to defer them to the subcommittee, which is fine with me. But if you do, I can speak to them.
I think I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather let them say, if you want to say something briefly on the residential units, you can do that, but make it really brief.
Okay. All I can say is, first of all, the residential development was an integral part, an integral part, not an incidental, but an integral part of the riverfront master plan as a whole. The inclusion, the overlay district refers only to the G and J and former Mirage site. But as part of the larger master plan, this couldn't and wouldn't have been done without the opportunity to redevelop the G and J site. So the, the zoning overlay district is more restrictive than the master plan, but the two very definitely relate to each other. I think in the interest of time, we can undoubtedly address all of the issues in subcommittee. And if that's okay with Mr. President and the members, I'll defer to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Member Decchio, since you were on the committee, I'll let you, I'll give you a minute, but I, I really want to move on.
Understood. I'll be super brief. I'm just looking for the date and the time of that subcommittee meeting. So I can fill my calendar.
That will be at our next city council meeting, which I believe is the eighth.
I think it's March 1st, Mr. President.
March 1st?
March 8th at 5 o'clock is the next zoning subcommittee meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I knew my memory was better than yours, Paul.
Yes, indeed.
Council, do you have something really quickly brief, or you, or you want to wait for committee?
No, I'm, I'm all set, Mr. President. I'll save my comments for the subcommittee meeting.
Thank you very much. And we're going to get you a new laptop before the next meeting.
Hopefully, we will. Thank you.
The audio is killing us. Okay, I think we're ready to go to zoning with this.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Challenge item number six. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Mario Merengi, 42 Nahant Ave, Winthrop, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to operate a commercial garage at 22 Naples Road, Revere, Mass.
Rule of conduct. People in favor?
Good evening, councillor. This is Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. I'm hoping everyone can hear me.
Can you hear you?
Excellent. It's good to be heard and good to be seen, especially in these tough times. But again, Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, I represent Mario Merengi tonight on this project. In particular, it is for a special permit for a commercial garage use, in particular, a storage and repair shop at 22 Naples Road here in Revere. In particular, the, the site is a brand new 4,000 square foot structure. It is primarily one floor or an open area floor plan for that first floor that allows for storage. On the, there is a small second floor of 20, 290 square feet, which is for a small office. But again, it's a 4,000 square foot structure made out of steel. The, the interior is primarily for the storage and minor repair of autos. It is a new structure. It is code compliant, including with the fire department. And it has been approved across the board. With regard to the zoning, it's currently in the GB district. This particular district, it does allow for a commercial garage by special permit. I think it's important to note that in seeking the commercial garage permit, this is the proper designation. It is the proper permit that allows for storage and repair. I know there have been some questions about that, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that, that indeed this special permit, the, the so-called commercial garage permit is indeed what is needed for the storage and repair operation that Mr. Merengi hopes to operate there. I think it's also important to note that this proposal was first put forward by Mario back in October of 2019. The original floor plan was submitted then, the original site plan was submitted then. And on those original floor plan and site plan, storage and repair was the designation for those plans. Mario's position, our position on this hasn't changed one bit from day one. And that goes back to October of 2019 when that was first submitted to site plan review. It made its way through site plan review, and then ultimately, at some point in that process, some sort of building permit was issued that allowed for. some sort of building permit was issued that allowed for the creation of the current structure that is 22 Naples Road. I think it's also important to note that parking was an issue that had come up. I think it's important to note that the facility itself allows for nine parking spots in the rear, I believe five in the front. And also on the inside, it is, we are requesting for a permit for six. So we are roughly, roughly at 20, 20, 20 spots for vehicles on the property itself, which, which is more than ample for what Mr. Merengi does on a weekly basis for that facility. I think in looking at Naples, Naples Road, most of you know that area. It is an industrial street. Mario's facility is not the only automotive repair shop on that street. There are a number of others, automotive shops as well as detailing establishments. It is indeed a general business district and it is indeed an area that houses a number of these type of enterprises. I know that in the past, there's been an issue with parking on the street and there has been some legitimate complaints about vehicles coming up and down Naples, especially with the new hotel at the bottom of the street. I know that Mario has met repeatedly with achievers from the Revere Fire Department, Paul Achievers, and he's made a commitment that all vehicles, especially during off-business hours, meaning at night or in the morning or weekends, everything is parked on the property or in the back of the property. And so that's important to note that when it comes to the parking of motor vehicles, that Mario's cars are parked on the site or in the back of the site. Now clearly during the course of the day, his cars and vehicles come in and out, you always have that interplay of motor vehicles being worked on, taken on to the site and taken off the site. But that's just the ordinary course of business for these kind of operations. But the important point is that at night, weekends, when the, when these, when the facility is closed, that these cars are parked on the site. That being said, I'm more than happy to take any questions. I think the, there have been a number of photographs or renditions that have been submitted with the application that show the building. I do think the site, as well as the the special permit is consistent with the other businesses in the area. And it would, the upgrade in the actual facility is an improvement to the area, given the fact that many of the other structures on Naples are fairly older. That being said, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, well, other proponents, anybody else in favor? Not seeing any opponents. People opposed?
Councillor Zambudo, I have two letters on the record.
Want to read them?
One from, we can waive the reading or are you going to just read where they're from? They're pretty lengthy. They're about a page each. The first letter of opposition is from Tina Baresi, owner of Revere Tanning. And the other opponent is Sal Junior in Concheta, Missola, 425 American Legion Highway.
So noted. Any other opponents? Anybody opposed? We'll go to councillors. We'll close that side of the hearing. Councillors.
Councillor Zambudo, there was one attendee, Nick Malanson, had his hand raised. I didn't catch him in time. I'm not sure if he was listed as a proponent or an opponent. Allow him to speak.
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Malanson.
Can you guys hear me?
We hear you.
All right, I'm not necessarily against it, off far it. My, my two concerns are this, is when he came in front of me for conservation, the application listed it was going to be for storage of vehicles only, not for any repairs. And I outright asked him that at the conservation meeting. He says, Nick, it's just going to be for storage of vehicles. And my other issue is, if granted, and I have no problem with it being a repair shop, is there going to be a mechanical repair shop or an auto body repair shop? And because right now I see during the course of the day, and it's not just him on Naples Road, it's not, and, but I do see in front of his body shop across the street, cars are during the day torn apart and parked on the street. I don't want to see that. You know, that isn't something that should be happening. It shouldn't be happening in his body shop across the street. And it shouldn't be happening in his body, at his repair shop on Naples Road now. Cars in disrepair that kind of make the, make the area look blighted. You know what I mean? It shouldn't be happening during the course of the day. And I know, coming in and out, I know what happens. I'm in the automotive business. I'm in the, the sales end of it. So I do know part of what happens, but I just don't want to see cars torn apart, sitting on a, on a city street during the course of the day. It makes it look bad. So I'm not against off far it, but I just want to make sure he abides by all the rules of what's supposed to be happening down there.
I think if I could, if I could address.
Not yet. We're going to go through this like we, like we normally do. Okay? So we heard from proponents and opponents. We're going to go to councillors. This is going to subcommittee. So I'd ask everybody to be brief. I'll call on the ward councillor, councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, Mr. President, thank you very much. To say the very least, Naples Road is the worst road in the city of Revere.
Agreed.
What it has is has four or five businesses there that absolutely have no regard for the welfare of our community. I've asked several, on several occasions, preaching every one of them to, to tidy it up a bit, not to park under the billboard, to go by the rules of order, do not infringe upon people's rights, which is private property under that billboard. They're not supposed to be parked there. I can't pick, single out any one of them who's to blame because at some point in time throughout the day, they're all to blame. And to pinpoint our, my frustration because the applications coming forward and I've shared my experiences with Paul Achievers, sharing my frustration as he has with his. To me, this is an affront to our community. The business is there. And the business is complaining because they're no bargains either. I am so sick and tired of this neighborhood because they take away from the rights of our community. But the given right is, they do have businesses there. We have somewhat to work with them. Now, this is a plea I make to them. Stay within the confines of your business. Master Auto, keep your business the way you belong. Brothers Auto, keep where you belong. And Mario, keep within the confines of the property that you purchased from Brothers Auto. And then we're going to turn around the tanning. They have cars and everything else out front there and, you know, I'm not picking, it's the whole neighborhood that's got me so angry that they have disregard for our city. They could care less about me. So now I don't care about them. You know, I pleaded with them. I tried to be neighborly. And we had opposition from someone sent in. I looked up. I couldn't even identify with them because they're not listed in the voter book. So I can't, I don't know who they are. They're listed as owners of a certain number at American Legion Highway. Only relationship I would have is if someone's a voter and I could look them up and contact them. I don't have that ability because they don't probably live there. They may be, probably a property that they rent out. So there's another, every single landowner or business owner in that area lives out of the city. Every single one of them would never live next door to that where they, where that place of business is. None of them would. You know, so I'm going to talk up at the zoning subcommittee, but we are not to take it all out on Mario's towing because he is promised through his attorney that he's going to keep his business inside. It's just going to be for a pair of autos with no spray boot and no cars parked outside that fence. Now, and given the numbers of nine cars in the rear, five in the front, six inside, that's a total of 20 cars. Now, if he's doing more than 20 cars, he's in the wrong location. He needs a much larger location to conduct his business. So again, when people outgrow their properties for their business, they just squeeze it in. And what happens? The neighborhood shares their business concerns, which they shouldn't do. They, that's not what they live there for. So the people that live on Naples Road, I want to hear from them. I don't want to hear from someone owns a business, someone is a competitor or someone who rents out their property. I want to hear from people who live and reside there and share the experience that I see daily. I go by that site so many times, I can't tell you. When I look over, I get disgusted. And it's under my watch and I've been trying to be good neighbors to all of them. They don't appreciate that. They don't recognize that. So I plead out with the attorney who represents Mario's, who promised me that he would do the right thing for our neighbors. Now, we'll talk in subcommittee further, but I just wanted to share out those thoughts because shame on me if I didn't express my views on this particular location. Because you don't have to be a neighbor, you don't have to be a resident or Revere, you don't have to be any, all you have to do is be a car driving by seeing this awful sight on American Legion Highway. And someone complained about, you know, one of the businesses complained about the new hotel. Well, the new hotel is kind of neat. It's very clean. Their business is that, you know. So let's talk about this in, it's subcommittee and maybe we can rectify all the problems there and hold everybody accountable for their own actions because they certainly have enough to take care of on their own. Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief and my battery just blinked from my computer. So if I cut out, I'm going to get it next. But I just want to say I have nothing but the utmost respect for the ward councillor. He's doing everything in his due diligence to protect his community and his residents. But I will say on a professional note, I have nothing but the utmost respect for the owners of this property. They're, they're very responsive. When there's an issue, they will address it. And I know for a fact that once this is done, if there are any questions, comments or concerns, they're the kind of people that you reach out to and say, you know, fix this and it's fixed and it will happen. And I know that they're good neighbors and will be working with the city to make sure that, you know, this is their property. This is their family business. It's something they're very proud of and it's something that they will hold to high standards. So I look forward to discussing it in committee.
Great. Thank you, councillor. Other councillors, I don't see any hands. Okay, and it looks like this is going to go to subcommittee.
Mr. President, I have my hand up.
What? You didn't have it up when I looked, but you do now.
You're correct. Mr. President, we had received earlier notification from a resident of, so basically we obtained photos of what has transpired on the industrial street. And more importantly, I am troubled by what Nick Malaysian had said because I remember that meeting, the conservation meeting. And I have some misgivings about somebody giving their word once and then giving the opportunity to give it to, give it to us twice and be misled. So I'm going to go by the old George Kalala standard and is if I lied to once, never trust again. I can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is going to the zoning subcommittee. Madam Clerk.
Challenge item number seven is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report.
Chairman Maribito.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met. We had two items on the agenda. One was about transit, transient vendors. That was kept in committee. Another one was an ordinance establishing wage theft regulations. This was voted favorably, favorably by the subcommittee. This, if this ordinance is passed, it would establish wage theft prevention regulations in the city of Revere. It will set the required standard in regards to all bids and proposals for the provision and delivery of services within the city. This will apply to every new contract and every renewal term of contract after July 1st, 2021. This ordinance will also protect our city's capital and lessens our liability by not doing business with prospective contractors and vendors who have violated fair labor laws. The distribution of city funds and tax paid dollars should never support unethical and unlawful employers that manipulate and treat employees unfairly. Also passing this ordinance favorably will help law-abiding and honest businesses wanting to do businesses with our city by not having to compete with bids submitted by dishonest businesses who violate the laws. Our city is filled with hardworking people. This is about workers' rights and our city not condoning and deterring wage theft by setting wage regulations. So I also want to thank councillor Janino for working with me on this ordinance as well. So I hope my colleagues on this honorable body will vote favorably for this motion.
Okay, on the ordinance, ordered on a second reading, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Ordered on a third and final read.
Do we need a roll call for this?
I thought it was voted out favorably. Do we need a roll call, Madam Clerk?
There is a roll call. You're almost there, councillor.
So that's the third reading there, councillor.
I know. Well, I, I thought I was doing it right, but my chairman interrupted me, so.
I apologize.
Okay, okay. So on a third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, on engrossment and ordainment.
Roll call for engrossment and ordainment. Shall the city council approve an ordinance establishing wave, wave, I'm sorry, wage theft prevention regulations? Councillor Janino? Yes? Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
I learned my council rules last year, councillor Zambudo. Took me 12 months. Yes.
Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Vertundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Viscanti?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Zambudo?
And I do know the rules.
The ordinance is ordered, engrossed and ordained. Challenge item number nine is the zoning subcommittee report.
Mr. President, can I have leeway for one minute? Can I just thank my colleagues for voting favorably for this motion? I really appreciate it. It's an ordinance that's really going to impact and have a, help our city capital. So thank you.
I'll speak for the council. It's our pleasure.
Next item is the zoning subcommittee report.
Chairman Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we had two pieces of business and both items were voted on unanimously as withdrawals without prejudice. So those items can be, I don't believe we have to put on those, but they will both withdraw them without prejudice.
Councillor President, the city council does have to vote on the request. Yes.
On the first withdrawal.
This is on, I'm sorry, council order number 20-023. This is a special permit for 7-9 to Hone Street. Shall the city council grant the petitioner's request to withdraw the application without prejudice? Councillor Janino?
Yeah.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Vertundo?
Yes.
Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Viscanti?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice. Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice. And on the second application, it's Council Order 21-024. This was the special permit request for 1540 North Shore Road. Shall the City Council grant the petitioner's request to withdraw the application without prejudice? Counselor Janino. Voting yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Obaselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Voting yes, this application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
Mr. President?
Counselor Sorino.
Can we mute Counselor Powers, please?
I already did.
Oh, thank you, Madam Clark.
Got to get him a new laptop.
I'll set a new Chromebook up tomorrow morning.
Great.
All right, next item on the agenda, we're up to motions. Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor McKenna. The mayor be requested to enforce the short-term rental ordinance, which was approved on September 1st, 2020. In accordance with the ordinance, a short-term rental enforcement office should have been created to enforce the provisions of said ordinance and address the numerous complaints the City Council has received since its passage. Without enforcement, residents are forced to live next to habitual partying at all hours of the night, which diminishes the quality of life of these longtime residents. We owe it to our residents to take control of these unacceptable situations and hold the property owners accountable.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the last two months, I've had two major complaints. It's, you know, it's not fair that these longstanding Revere residents that have to live next to these Airbnbs, especially if it's an absentee landlord, landlord owner. You know, we just had an incident on Summer Street, which is a thickly settled residential area where they had a gigantic 20-year-old, a number of 20-year-olds that had a gigantic party, that it wasn't safe, no one was wearing masks, the police had to be called, then an ambulance had to come and take a kid away. They called the landlord, and the landlord said, well, you know, until the city shuts me down, I'm going to rent this place. And that's the attitude. So I it's just ridiculous. It's such a process to shut these people down. You have to go through fine after fine after fine, and then finally, they can't do it anymore. But it's, you know, it's these poor people that their quality of life is being threatened. And it's, and I just want to hold these absentee landlords accountable, and for the city to step up and start doing some, you know, processing this. Because right now, we have an office, it's an Airbnb office, but it's not staffed. So these people, we have an ordinance that's been on the books in September, and nothing's being done so far. So we really need to step up as a city. We have two over 250 Airbnbs. Most of them are in Beaumont, a lot of them are in Beaumont. And I know Counselor Guanasso has a lot in his ward, too. So we really need to start the process of we already passed the ordinance, let's let's put a staffer in there, and let's monitor and collect the taxes, too, because we're not collecting, we can get taxes from this, but we can get revenue. So we really need to step up and start this. Thank you.
Do I mute? Sorry, Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I thought within the confines of the ordinance was a provision that stated you have to have the owner occupied in order to have a rental. Now, if that's not being enforced, then what good is us going and citing legislation and creating legislation that will be beneficial to our community if we don't enforce it? I agree 1,000% with Counselor McKenna. And I also agree with the next motion that's coming forward from Counselor Keith. These two motions happen to be the most important motions within our community, which affects and impacts the neighborhood and each and every street. So we should be paying attention to this. And we're not. I know we have a COVID-19, and we have a million other avenues we can go to. But these avenues, they're income-producing. We can hire personnel that'll be self-produced. They can generate their own income from fines. They'd be self-sufficient. It's a no-brainer. We could just start hiring these people to enforce our ordinances, or we look like a bunch of buffoons. We're sitting up here creating ordinances, and no one's paying attention. And no one, but more importantly, no one's enforcing it. That's why they're not paying attention. You hit them in the Parker book, they listen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I just say one thing to this, and I won't say anything else, is the only way they know that they the only know way they know is if they get a police report. If if the neighbors don't call, and they have a party going on, then if the police don't call, they don't know. And if the police are called, they are fined. But the residents have to call. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as like Counselor Guanasso mentions, this is very similar to the next piece that I put in front. These, you know, I was on the panel, and I helped draft this ordinance with Counselor McKenna and Counselor Guanasso and rest of the council. We had a lot of meetings with the city staff to go over how we would like to actually see this be monitored and enforced, and the use of technology to help work with the city, so we can pay attention, so it's not just another paper ordinance. But these are the quality-of-life ordinances that we put through for our residents, because that's who we take care of first. You know, and I know Speaker Delio mentioned it earlier, we have for the people, we're here for you. These are quality-of-life ordinances. Parking issues in our city are quality of life. Owning your home, renting your home, living in a place that you call safe, and free of 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 constant music, or or partying, or just neighbors that just don't care about you because they're coming and going in transient, doesn't work for the most, the majority of Revere. Okay, there's certain areas for that, sure. You know, we have we have a robust amount of hotels now. We're not protecting the hotels in our city by doing by not enforcing the ordinance. And again, it's a quality-of-life ordinance. This is no disrespect to anyone for that matter. But, you know, when 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 we have city priorities, we just spent, we have the staff to do it, we have the people to do it. We just spent, you know, almost every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night for the last six, seven weeks, we were on all this massive planning for the boatyard. And we had unbelievable amounts of staff and unbelievable amounts of resources on it. You know, we can do the same for all the priorities of the council. And that's all I'd say is we have our priorities need to be the city's priorities, and the city's priorities should be our priorities. So it needs to work hand in hand. So, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm begging on the mayor and his team to work on a solution to help resolve this, and that goes into the next piece. Maybe there's one inspector that does a little bit of everything. Is that so bad? The inspector checks on overnight parking, the inspector checks on on issues with housing, and the inspector checks on unlawful Airbnbs. We can you, we can multitask, okay? So that's all I'd suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Rotundo? I know I'm not on you.
No, 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 I'm having some technical difficulties, but I applaud this motion, and I will support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Keith, that the mayor be requested to appropriate funds for the parking program revolving account to hire additional overnight parking enforcement officer. This should be for weekend overlap specifically.
Counselor Keith.
Mr. President, first of all, the parking department has done an unbelievable job. I messaged, you know, Mr. Rose, I messaged a few of his employees. They're they're very responsive. They do an unbelievable job. They've done a really good job of rolling this program out. It did take a little while, not by them, but, you know, getting signs up across the city. And they've done a really nice job. But no matter how good you do, if you only have up to two people out there doing, how many streets do we have in our city? 400? 400 streets? How can you enforce that with maximum two people overnight? So it just doesn't work. It'll never, you'll never be able to set the precedent. And I'm not saying that that has to happen forever. Again, maybe we have to grant some overtime, maybe we have to spend a few more dollars in enforcement over the period of time just to set this standard, and then people will understand. But you can, you know, it's like we're picking sectors apart on the city, and then maybe we can get it back around to that in two weeks. So I know, I don't know about any other ward councils, I get messages every night from residents going, why do we have this program if it's not going to be enforced? So all I'd say is, put the money into it. We got we got great people overseeing the process. They've done a really nice job. I say give more resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question. I threw you to Counselor Keith, just a quick question, Counselor. Have you reached out to Parking Director Jim Rose on this position, regarding this position? I mean, I know the the parking program has just been rolled out. And for the most part, it's it's gone quite smooth. I know there's been some pickups. But for the most part, it's it's going quite well. And it kills me to say that, since Jim is my father-in-law, and he'll never let me down. So but he's done, his department has done a great job. And I would just hate to step on his toes regarding this. So I'd like to hear from Jim if if he's in on this meeting, if he's available before voting on it, and see where he stands on it as well. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. And Council President, through you to Counselor Visconti, you know, I think that this is absolutely would be no way in shape or form stepping on anyone's toes, trying to ask them and offer their department more resources. A lot of times, people have to come in front of us on budget time to fight for more staff. I think as a council, we're saying, here you go. But no, I understand what you're saying, certainly from a respect standpoint. But I think, you know, and again, I think he knows, you know, I do message him often with some of my concerns with different streets. I have a very vocal ward, which is very nice. And then I think, you know, even I think I even asked, you know, through the auditing department, how much overlap there is. You know, I think there's, if there's only two or three PCOs, and you have five days a week, five-day work weeks, what happens when someone's sick? What happens when someone has vacation? How much actual overlap is there? And as you all know, the city's very notorious for lacking the oversight on the weekends, just like like anything, right? More people like to work Monday through Friday. So but again, I, you know, if he has any comments, I'd love to hear them, too. And how does it work best to him?
I'm not sure that the Parking Director is in the ordinance, but I'll check with the city clerk, if you have him there.
No, Mr. Rose is present.
He is not present?
No.
Okay, great. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, this is the single most and largest problem we have within our community. This should be a seven-day-a-week job. We charged Jim Rose with a responsibility and undertaking that was so massive and so concentrated, that we should give him the tools to do his job. And the tools that he needs is people power. We need to give Jim Rose people power to operate that position seven days a week. Parking doesn't take a vacation on weekends, and violators come more on weekends. People have congregation of parties, and it's, you know, it might not affect Ward 6, per se, because they're spaced out, they have plenty of parking up there. But in highly congested Ward 3, space is at a premium. And so these people that are tying up our streets, that don't live, I still have that same out-of-state car on Lowell Street, he's still there, not tagged, because we don't have people down here. It gets word that they're coming of some sort, and he leaves. We need to, we need to have the area serviced every night, every night. We can't just say, oh, we'll be here in one week, and we'll be back in three weeks. We can't do that. It doesn't make any program feasible nor workable. And it gives frustration with those members who are trying to do the job. I can imagine the pain that Jim Rose feels. He's seeing what's taking place. It's not his fault. He, he, when I call, he's on something like, you know, I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't have to call the director and say, get on this particular street. And then, you know, they'll be back in three weeks. That's unacceptable, you know, because and it's not, it's not his position. It's his tools that he's been given to do his job. So this is the most important thing in a, you know, when we went door-to-door, and we sought votes in 2017, 2019, especially in 2017. This was the single largest concern, very, very long-term residents were thinking of moving out, because they just were inundated with cars. So let's give our neighbors and our longtime residents a little peace of mind, and show enforcement, and reward people who registered their cars in Revere. For God's sakes, you have a single-family home, you can register three cars out of that. How much more do you need? We're being fair to our residents.
All right, Counselor.
We shouldn't be fair, we shouldn't be fair to people violating the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President Jim Rose is here.
I have the director, Mr. Rose, Mr. Director, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
I hear you well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor President, Mr. Mr. Zambudo. I appreciate this opportunity to address the council. I just wanted to go over this. As far as anyone who doesn't know how it works for hiring within the parking department, for anyone who isn't aware of how it works, is that I determine if additional staffing is needed. If that is the case, I meet with the Budget Director, Mr. Viscay, to discuss hiring additional staffing, and if he agrees, it is brought to the mayor for approval. That is basically how it works. Currently, the parking enforcement staffing is actually, it's where it should be at this time. As I previously said, if I determine we need another parking enforcement office, I request one through the proper procedures that we follow. I'm actually really not sure why this was brought before the council tonight, and it was never discussed with me prior. Thank you. But also, I'd like to add, if I could, please.
Right ahead.
So since the enforcement of the overnight parking ordinance began on January 4th, we have issued nearly 600 tickets to Ward 4 alone over a six-week span. As you can see, we have patrolled Ward 4 many times at the request of the council. And we've also done other wards throughout the city. The department, the parking department's goal is to get everyone who parks on our streets overnight to get a free permit so they can park legally. It is not our goal to ticket as many constituents as we can. And I want to add, something was brought up tonight that struck a note with me, with Representative Robert Delio. He said that we are here to help the people. That's how I try to run my parking department. Okay, overall, at this time, 25,000 resident stickers have been issued. With 3,936 tickets written for sticker violations, we have done an incredible job. If you gave me one more parking control person, it's a drop in the bucket. We're getting this job done. We rolled it out. We're doing, I think, it's, we're doing a fantastic job with it. Yes, Mr. Keith, we do get people who call from different streets up in your ward. I could, it would be, if I give you the figures of how many tickets that have been written on those streets, you, your jaw would drop. You just, I mean, they're not complying. Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, I don't go up there every night. I might go up there once a week, once every 10 days. There's 500 streets in the city that we have to do. My guys are writing tickets, and they are all over the place. But what's happening now, which is helping us, the parking departments, is that when they go out, before we start, we have to do the whole street. Now we're going up the street, we might be stopping ticketing six cars. We have some streets in your area, Mr. Keith, we've issued 29 tickets in one night. Okay, they're not complying, they're not coming in. Why aren't they complying? Some of the reasons they're not complying, their cars aren't registered. I have no right to run their place to see if they're registered. They owe tickets. They owe excise taxes. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the residents. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the residents have to be patient with this. And they call in, and I see the emails, and I get very disturbed when I see any emails basically saying that, why do we have a permit parking if, regulations if, if it is not being enforced? It is being enforced, it, it, it's, it's being enforced. And it's, it's a lot of work, it's going to take more time, but we're working in the right direction and we're doing it the right way, especially during the COVID-19. And I guess my next suggestion, and another time, I don't want to keep on talking on this, is if people don't comply, maybe after three, issuing three tickets, maybe we should revisit an ordinance, and I'm not saying three tickets in one night, within maybe a month, if you don't comply, we tow your car. Maybe that's the next move. You know, I, I don't have the answer to how we're going to get them to all come in and comply, but I'm seeing more stickers than ever out, out on the streets. And I don't want to tie up any more of your time. Thank you, thank you for basically telling me. I feel I'm quite confident, and you actually said, Mr. Keith, that I can run my parking department. And we're, we're doing a job, everybody's working hard, and that's it, thank you.
Mr. President, I just, just through you to Mr. Rose. I wanted to say, you know, Mr. Rose, I have the utmost respect for you, and you do do a wonderful job. And you have been doing, I mean, you've taken on this role from a couple people before you, and you've done 10 times the amount of work, the work and the program that you installed. So you've done a wonderful job. By no means was it meant to be at all, I hope you, you know, you can, you can reflect on the comments. Nothing was disrespectful towards you, and never would I ever feel that way. But you know, I, I guess I could have had more of a direct conversation with you in advance. I don't know if it would have stopped me from presenting this motion, maybe I could have given you a better heads up. I, I actually feel like adding to your department would have been helpful. But again, you're, you're going to run your department and you're going to run it well. If, if you need some resources from, from the council or from us, I'd be happy to support you there.
I appreciate that, Mr. Keith, Councilor Keith, I appreciate that. And all the help of all the councils. The councils have been very good to me, respectful to me, and we're going to get the job done. We're in the areas, we're working hard, and the, the new hires that I hired are terrific, terrific people. They're out there, they're out there working all night through all types of conditions, all types of weather, and they're, and they're getting it done. And Pat, to hire one more, would it be, it would be a drop in the bucket? I, I could put 15 on, okay? We have 500 streets, but we're doing it. And, and you know, the best thing is, Councilor, when they do call, and any councils call me, we get the street, that's a tiger in the street, I can go to that street that night. I, I will for surely hit that street. Joey McKenna, you've been quiet, I've been in your neighborhood quite frequently over the weekends, because I, I do have coverage over the weekend, okay? I, I've, I'm working one overnight shift, and seven nights a week, we have coverage out there right now. So with that, I would have let everybody go home, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Rose, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I think it's time to move on to, to another motion. Madam Clerk.
What was the, what was the disposition of that last motion?
I'm hoping it's withdrawn.
Sure, I'll be happy to withdraw it, and you know, just to potentially touch base on it later, maybe just with the department themselves.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. Next motion.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Keith that the city council change the name of the portion of Prospect Avenue running 390 feet easterly from Spring Street to Prospect Place in accordance with Section 12.4.020 of the Revere Revised Ordinances.
Councilor Keith.
Mr. President, I think you're aware of some of the residents, there's not many on this street, Prospect Place. There's only a few homes with a couple duplexes and residencies. So there was a notice sent to them just recently in regards to a change of their address due to conformity with official listings on the books. They were very, they were very much surprised because they've been listed on their addresses, their, their bills, their, their retirement papers, you name it, as Prospect Place since the built, since that area was built. And they were very nervous that it's going to be called Prospect Ave. again, or not again, Prospect Ave., especially where it's cut off. You drive up Prospect Ave. from Broadway, it hits a dead end. You'd have to turn around, go all the way back down Prospect Ave., get onto Broadway, go down Fennel Street, and then loop back up to Prospect Place off of Spring and Heysel. It's about a 12-minute drive if there's a little traffic on Broadway. We don't want to be doing that to public safety officials, and God forbid, those five or six residents need some support. So it's just a lot easier to change it officially on the books as Prospect Place. I gather when it was installed 17 or 20 years ago, it was, they thought it was, but apparently it's not. So the engineer seems to be happy with that, and everyone seems to be happy with it up there.
Thank you, Councilor Keith, this is a, it, it is a public safety issue. This was changed to Prospect Place, although somehow not on the books because of an incident that they couldn't find the, this was when Henry Trafoni lived there, and they couldn't find, they couldn't get there. So this is when it was changed to Prospect. Now it's on Google Maps and everything as Prospect Place, and they find, you know, there has been some incidents up there. And you're right, there's only approximately four residents, four different buildings up there that are on Prospect Place, but it really has to stay that way. And I appreciate your effort for, for doing that. You've made a lot of people continue to feel safe up there because they were worried. Thank you. Councilor Rattando, you got something quick on this?
Absolutely supportive, thank you.
Thank you, great. On the motion, all in favor?
No, it gets ordered to a public hearing, there needs to be a public hearing on this matter.
It does?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Ordered to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to install bollards at an appropriate location at 101 Beach Street to prevent the destruction of private property. There have been two recent hit-and-run car accidents where the fence and personal vehicle at this location have been damaged due to vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed around the bend at this section of Beach Street.
Councilor McKenna.
I speak for itself, but I just want to tell you where the location is. It's, when you're coming around Beaumont, it's Beach Street, it's around the corner, and it's right in front of Pleasant Street. And this poor lady has gotten hit twice. They take, they've taken down her fence, they've hit her property, they hit her house, and it was, they left.
They know the location.
So I just, instead of a God reel, I spoke to Paul Agenzio, and he, he suggested the bullet, the bullets. So that's what I'm asking the councilists to do, a couple of them, so it will help her.
Great. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor Moravito that the mayor be requested to include on snowstorm code red calls a friendly reminder to residents that space savers after snowstorms are not allowed. Further, that the mayor instruct the DPW and parking control to pick up and dispose of any space savers on public ways when seen on their routes throughout the city.
Councilor Moravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in no way whatsoever am I, you know, am I against space savers. But we're at the point where we just were discussing parking issues, right? And some people take advantage of it. Granted, if you shovel your space, your neighbor should do the neighborly thing and respect that you shovel their space. There is no ordinance on the books about space savers. It's technically illegal, it's considered throwing trash on the street. After last snowstorm, I can give you a list of items that people were using as space savers. Even when the space, snow was gone, they were using, I seen a table leg, I seen a, it looked like half of a mannequin, I seen a shovel in the snow, I seen snow, I seen the orange cones. What people are doing is, if national grid is working in an area and they put cones around a hole, they're actually removing the cone and leaving that hole exposed so a car can go over it, and they're using the cones as a parking saver. So I think it's very important when there's a snow emergency to remind, a friendly reminder saying, hey, listen, be reasonable. There is no ordinance that says you can use a space saver, but be logical about it, you know?
Great. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 16, this is a late motion presented by Councilor Rattando that the mayor and city council go on record as supporting Senate bill filed by Senator Bicori in act relative to medication assisted recovery and care.
Councilor Rattando.
Mr. President, I believe this speaks for itself. I don't know if you want to put it in committee, and we can speak a little bit more on it, but quite frankly, I, I think this is something that we can support.
Well, send it to your committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further business, Council President.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Point of personal privilege, please.
Mr. President, okay. Councilor Serena and Councilor Gina refuse themselves from the last motion, please.
So noted, councilors, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have my point of personal privilege?
Yes, right ahead.
So today is one year that the first person passed due, due to the coronavirus. So I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of the 500,000 people that have passed during this year, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further business, we're adjourned.